We'll call the meeting to order. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. It's always nice to see a lot of faces in the crowd. To start off our agenda, oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Mr. Farmer?
Here.
Henning?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Merkel?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Bachman?
Here.
And Stevens?
Here.
Thank you.
See, I get so excited to see the faces, I forget the roll call. So tonight, we have two special presentations, and these are, when I say special presentations, they are special for us. This is probably, I think for all the council, I speak for everyone, I'm sure, and the staff, that this is probably the best presentations that we have as a city. So first, I'm gonna have Chief Hamlin come up.
Tonight is a special night. We have two ceremonies swearing in. We hired two good guys, and they have some experience, and I'd like to introduce them to you. First, I'd like to call up Officer Kyle Marlett. If you'd come up with your family. Kyle's here with his wife Alicia and his three kids, Layland, Ronan, and Riker. Oops, sorry. It is. Sorry. Kyle's here with his wife, Michelle, I'm sorry, and he is following in his family's footsteps of public service. He attended the Sinclair Police Academy, and he attended that with Officer Ashley Schuman. With six years in law enforcement, including three years at South Charleston, where we stole him from, he joined the Clayton Police Department, hoping to focus on community relations, mental health, and drug interdiction. Off duty, Kyle says he's a devoted family man with his wife, Michelle, like I said, his children Kylie, Noah, and Elliot, and he's pleased to announce they have a new baby on the way. So... Mr. Mayor, that's it. And here's a badge, if you give that to his wife, and she'll pick it.
Okay, this is our office. Right hand. Say after me. Aye, Kyle Marlett.
Aye, Kyle Marlett. You're good.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will enforce and obey all laws?
That I will enforce and obey all laws.
Support and protect the Constitution?
Support and protect the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio?
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of officer?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of officer?
In the City of Clayton?
In the City of Clayton.
Montgomery County?
Montgomery County.
State of Ohio?
State of Ohio.
During my continuance in office.
During my continuance in office.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations. Okay. Can you hold the baby? And?
Why don't you hold the baby, Mike?
I can do that, believe it or not.
Thanks, everyone, for coming in. Congratulations, everyone. Appreciate it.
Hey, do you guys want to get the whole family here?
Hey, Kyle, I appreciate you shaking hands. The whole family standing right there. Come up here.
Can you come up here? We're gonna take a look at you.
Everybody.
Turn around now.
Family, I'll send Kyle a buzz. Regeneration. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your support, everybody. Good job.
Okay, the next one I'd like to call up, the right one, is Officer Joseph Pugh. If you bring your family up. He's here with his wife Alicia, and his two children, he played with, Ronan and Riker. And he attended Wright Street and graduated with a bachelor's degree. He attended the Grand County Criminal Justice Academy, where he got his OPAL certification. In 2016, he became an officer for the village of South Charleston, that's where he stole the firm. He was promoted to sergeant in 2021. After eight and a half years, he felt it was time to grow his knowledge and experience, and he'd like to thank Officer Marlett for advising him of the opportunity to work here. He's here with us. Do you guys need any of the family, who do you want to come up?
Come up if you want.
Are you a dancer? Are you a dancer? Huh? Are you a dancer? Yeah, you're looking pretty good, too.
Please raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I'm Joseph Pugh.
I'm Joseph Pugh.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will enforce and obey all laws?
That I will enforce and obey all laws.
Support and protect the Constitution of the United States?
Support and protect the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio?
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of officer?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of officer?
In the City of Clayton?
In the City of Clayton.
Montgomery County?
Montgomery County.
The State of Ohio?
The State of Ohio.
During my continuance in office.
During my continuance in office.
Congratulations. Thanks for coming, everybody.
You guys want to get pictures?
Okay.
Okay, just one more.
Got to get all three smiles. All right, Henning. Everybody ready? Smile. There we go, we got you.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Hey, everybody, thanks for coming in.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Two, three, right, ladies and gentlemen. That's all I've got tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, since you're behind me, I'm not used to that in council. So tonight, we're just introducing one of our new full-time firefighter EMTs. We did our swearing-in back in November at our annual award ceremony for Sam Gracie. So this is just more of an introduction. Some of you came to that ceremony and saw him sworn in. So, Sam, if you want to come on up. Sam comes from us from Springboro, Ohio, where he graduated. He actually has an older brother that's with the Mason PD, so public service in the family. One thing I didn't even know, until you read all the bios of these guys, he's, his family owns Flying Pizza. But he's been here for four months, and I've yet to have Flying Pizza. So I don't know if we can correct that or not, but... So, he, some of his hobbies, he loves to play golf and spend time with his family and friends, and likes to work out. He graduated, like I said, from Springboro High School in '21, attended Sinclair and obtained his firefighter EMT. One of the good things about Sam right now, he's actually enrolled in paramedic school for Sinclair. So in about the next year or so, he should achieve that and hopefully pass that dreaded National Registry test that we all hate. He actually started in Wayne Township as a volunteer back in 2023. So he actually started in the footsteps of a lot of us old timers, I guess, that we started volunteering back in that day. So he lived in an area where he could actually volunteer. So he actually got his start as a volunteer, which is great. So just serving his community, not for the money, but just to serve his community. Then he got a part-time job with that same city, and then in 2024, we hired him as a part-time employee for the Collaborative and for, actually, Clayton. And then, what, about four months ago, I believe, we had an opening, and we hired Sam as our full-time EMT, and he's done a great job for us. He's young, he's enthusiastic, he works hard, he's just a joy to have around the firehouse, and he serves the community well. So we'd like to welcome Sam, and welcome to the department, Sam.
Thanks, sir. And we're gonna shake your hand.
I just want to say welcome to our two new officers, and also to Sam firefighter. Yeah. You can stay if you want, yeah. Thanks again, everyone, for coming, and thanks for the support. Okay, looks like we got three really great employees in those. Yeah, Sam I had met, police officers look great also. Good. All right, so we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the clerk's report.
Before you, you have the council meeting minutes of January 16th, 2025.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve the clerk's report as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous. We have no old business on the agenda. New business, looks like we have four resolutions. Will you read the first, please?
First, our resolution R-022513, a resolution authorizing the city manager and finance director to engage Julian and Grub Inc. to audit the basic financial statements of the city for the year ending December 31st, 2024, and the years ending December 31st, 2025, and 2026, at a cost not to exceed $14,100 annually.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Evening. Julian and Grub is the accounting firm that helps us compile our financial statements. We've been with them numerous years, and I have a good working relationship with them. They work well with our auditors as well, so just like to do a three-year contract with them to keep the continuity.
If you make the recommendation, I'll move for approval.
Second.
I just have a question, Kevin. Don't we have to go outside and hear somebody?
Unless you want to hire me some more assistance, we can do it in-house, but it's probably cheaper to go outside.
Okay. And we go by the GAB, AAB, any, general county, accepted county principles, right?
Yeah, we operate on a cash basis, but then they do generally accepted county principals, to gap it up, they call it, and then provide that.
Because everything says they're gonna put us on that, and we already use that, right?
Right.
Okay, the motion has been properly motioned by Mr. Henning and second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, will you read the second resolution, please?
Resolution R-022514, a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept proposal of and enter into a service agreement with Inglewood Truck, Towing, and Recovery.
Good evening, Mayor and council. We're just requesting that you authorize city manager to enter into a contract with Inglewood Truck and Towing as our sole provider for towing and recovery services. During the course of business, we learned that our contract had expired, and so we put out requests for proposals. We got two, Inglewood and 937 Towing and Recovery. They couldn't meet some of the criteria put out in the proposal, so we selected Inglewood Truck. We've been working with them for years and years, 20 years. They do a great job, we have no complaints. They're pretty reasonable, and they do us a great service, so.
Plus, they're Clayton residents. Plus, they're Clayton residents.
Plus, they are Clayton business, so yes. If anybody has any questions, I'll answer them, but.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Second.
Motion to approve the resolution as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that was unanimous. And will you read the third resolution, please?
Resolution R-022515, a resolution appointing Amanda Zimmerlin as city representative to the Board of Directors of the Joint Economic Development District, JED, pursuant to Section 8A1 of the JED contract between the City of Clayton and Clay Township.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
We always get a resume when we're putting people in new positions. I didn't see one this time. Did I miss it, Barbara, or?
We don't have one for the next one either.
Motion to accept or approve the resolution as written by Mr. Henning, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. And will you read the fourth resolution, please?
Resolution R-022516, a resolution appointing Mike Stevens as business representative member to the Board of Directors of the Joint Economic Development District, JED, pursuant to Section 8A3 of the joint, excuse me, JED contract between Clay Township and the City of Clayton.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Henning, second by Ms. Kelly. I think we probably need to have a roll call for this one.
Farmer?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Bachman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Abstain. Okay, is there any other business?
Yes, I'd like to revisit an ordinance number 0-01-25-02.
For clarification, is that a motion to reconsider?
It is a motion to reconsider.
And this, which ordinance is this?
Right, ordinance 0012502.
Okay.
Do you want to read the title, Barb, just so it's in the record, please? Okay. Ordinance 0012502, and ordinance adopting, rejecting, or modifying the planning commission's recommendation to approve with specified conditions, the application of SDG Warner Village LLC for a change in zoning from residential single-unit district RSD to planned development district PDD, and to further approve the preliminary development plan for 183.1044 acres of property located near the intersection of Sweet Potato Ridge Road and Main Street bearing parcel ID number M60030100001 within the City of Clayton, Ohio.
Is there any discussion on this?
You have to have a second.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
There's a motion, we have to have a second.
You can second, since you laid out.
Any of the other six members can second. And that's according to Robert's rules, because our council rules are silent on the second, so.
I'll second the motion.
No, is it, we're voting, we're basically going back and voting on this ordinance. We're not having to first be like a procedural.
Sorry, no, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Brandon. So right now, what we have is a motion to reconsider and a second. So what we would need to do is take a roll call, roll call vote on the motion to reconsider, and it has to have four votes in order for the motion to reconsider approved. And then if it is approved, then I can go on with the next step with respect to the ordinance. Is that all right?
One more, one more clarification. This is, this is preliminary, this is not the final. Still preliminary.
Yes, the preliminary, yes, exactly.
The preliminary plan. Okay, it's been properly motioned? It's been properly motioned and seconded? We have a, is there any other discussion?
I, yeah, my discussion is I think this is shameful, since we hadn't advertised this at all to the residents. And doing it under the dark of night to do this is, in my opinion, shameful, and I think the residents are going to be extremely disappointed in this. It shows that sometimes we have no transparency at all. We're not approving it.
Can I have Martina address this? Because I think this is a grounding concern that people have had or will have.
So what, what do you specifically want me to address? And I'll do the best I can.
Well, normally, as far as business items, it's a matter of 24-hour notification prior to, and it's like, in this case, why not 24-hour notification prior to being?
So according to the council rules, let me get the rule up here, which addresses motions... So, yeah, I got it. So according to council rule, for Section 7, motions to reconsider. Motions to reconsider an approved item, which is, this is not, so this portion doesn't apply, must be made before adjournment of that session of council for those items of legislation that are effective immediately, see 3B of these rules. This is the applicable provision of that rule. Motions to reconsider other legislation must be made prior to the close of the next following regular meeting of council. A motion to reconsider may be made only by a member who voted with the prevailing side. A motion to reconsider being laid on the table may be taken up and acted upon at any time when the council is engaged in the transaction of other business. No motion to reconsider may be made more than once on any matter, and the same number of votes is required to reconsider the action of council as was required to pass or adopt the matter.
And the action on this has to be done tonight, it cannot be pushed to another meeting?
Correct, that's how I'm reading the rule. It's because it says it has to be at the next regular meeting of council, which this is.
Nothing had to be advertised to the residents, at all.
Nothing in that council rule that I just read requires it, and then if you look at Robert's rules, Robert's rules defines a motion to reconsider as follows. A motion of American origin enables a majority in an assembly within a limited time and without notice to bring back further consideration, a motion which has already been voted on.
If this was, so if the vote on this was to change from the last meeting, would it need a second reading at the next, at the?
Yes.
So this would, this would essentially be the first reading?
First reading.
And then, and then our next meeting, it would come up again?
Right, and then, again, according to Robert's rules, because our rules are silent on this aspect of it, if the motion to reconsider were to pass, and you were to move on to reconsider the ordinance 0125-02, the effect of that is to take it back in time to immediately before the last vote, so that the motion that was on the table at the last meeting was Mr. Bachman's motion to approve with a second, so that's where we would start if you were to go back. Okay? So effectively, there would already be a motion to approve on the table according to the Robert's rules.
So... I, I don't know, I, once, I think... Without any advertisement to the residents, I think we have one, two, three. Are you residents, or I'm not sure if you are or not? You? No. So we have three residents here tonight. We had a packed house at the last meeting. So I think it's absolutely shameful and shows an extreme lack of transparency, so I hope the public is paying attention.
Well, I take offense to the reference in this being non-transparent, we're acting in accordance with Robert's rules.
Did the public know about this? And if you would say the public knew about it, then I would say it's transparent. The public did not know about it.
Since I'm not a lawyer, I'm not gonna argue that point, and I leave it to the attorneys to decide that.
So in my view, transparency is letting the public know about something in advance. The public did not know about this, therefore, it's not being transparent.
Okay, we have, is there anything else? Anything new? Okay, so we have the motion and the second on the floor. We have, we have a roll call, please?
Farmer?
No.
Henning?
No.
Gorman?
No.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Bachman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the vote, we will reconsider?
Yes, you needed four votes to go back. So basically, the procedure now is you would go back, like I said, to the point where Mr. Bachman had made a motion to approve this ordinance, and it was seconded. So now, what you need to do is you can discuss, engage in discussions as to whether or not you want to, you know, how you want to vote, et cetera, on this ordinance. So basically, you're at the discussion point of the merits of this ordinance.
So, Martina, at this point, we are at a point where we're just voting. It isn't any kind of the kind of motions or anything like that.
Well, like I said, you're at the point right now, I guess the easiest way, and I'm trying to describe it without being too convoluted here, I guess the easiest way to describe it is just go back three weeks to the January 16th council meeting, and we're at the point where Mr. Bachman has made a motion to approve, and I believe Mr. Merkel is the one who seconded that motion. Now you're at the discussion point, you want to discuss the merits of it, and then you would take another vote on the motion to approve.
Martina, who asked you to put that email together, too, council?
Nobody asked me to put it together. I was contacted by attorney, the attorney for the developer, who asked about a motion to reconsider. So I felt it appropriate to advise council.
So without council asking you, you would feel that it's necessary to do this per the developer's ask, who is not an elected official for the municipality?
No. So staff prepared that, or that email to council to prepare you in the event that the developer asked for that motion to reconsider, which we knew they were going to do. And I didn't want you to come into this meeting not having any idea or being able to follow Robert's rules.
Who asked for the redevelop, who asked for reconsideration?
The developer had contacted staff and requested if council would entertain a motion to reconsider.
And you just assumed that we would do that, then?
No, there's the possibility that you would, and we wanted to make sure that you knew what the process would be, should you decide to do that.
So he asked staff, should they not have asked council?
They weren't going to contact council. I mean, they could have contacted council, if they wanted to, they could have contacted council, but when they contacted staff, staff put together the email and then let council know that this was potentially going to happen.
So this was a way for you to ask Martina to do this under the radar, so it didn't have to go on the agenda?
That is absolutely not true.
It seems that way, big time, because you took it upon yourself to ask Martina to send us this email that said we couldn't talk to anybody about this agenda item versus...
Who informed you that you couldn't talk to anyone about this agenda item?
Martina did, on the email.
No, she said that the email was confidential, that it is attorney-client privilege. If you wanted to talk to the public about a motion to reconsider, you could have done that on your own volition.
Why didn't you add that to the email, then, for us to know that? Because we take very seriously what you put in this, and it doesn't say anything in there that we can now be subjective with some of the parts of, well, we may do a motion to reconsider, so. None of, you normally would have said in the email what we can talk about to the public and what we can't.
I don't feel comfortable talking about in open session, an attorney-client privileged communication.
So do sometimes they change? Sometimes it's attorney-client, and sometimes we now, but what Amanda just said is, sometimes the emails we get from you are subjective, and we can maybe talk about this paragraph, but not the last paragraph.
I don't, I don't recall putting in there telling you what you can and cannot talk about. And again, I just don't feel comfortable talking about an attorney-client privileged communication on the record.
Attorney-client privilege to us and not to the public. The public had no clue of any of this that's going on. Absolute lack of transparency, shameful. I think the individuals should have been here to ask council for the reconsideration, and if a member then would have wanted to do it, they could have done it. But to, to do it this way is just disrespectful to residents, and it's mind-blowing that this is the route that we're taking. is the route that we're taking.
Anything, any other discussion?
Oh, this will...
I want to remind everyone, this is preliminary. This is a preliminary plan.
This is a repeat of my question from the last meeting. Ms. I'm, you have contacted Northmont Schools regarding this development?
Yes, we have.
And what was their opinion on as far as the schools handling a, the potential increase of students?
That they would be able to handle the increasing, potential increase in students.
Since they're here, to the chiefs, oh, you can come up.
Yeah, we knew this was a possibly very question as well. So as far as the fire...
I haven't asked my question yet.
As far as the fire department goes, yes, we can handle the influx. We are better prepared now than we were five years ago to handle something like this. Since we're now part of the collaborative, I mean, basically, our staff has grown by four times, and they're even better served by the closer firehouse. So our collaborative mindset and in our agreement, the closest, most appropriate piece or apparatus or station response, so we're in a better position to handle the influx. And when we looked at the, you can never tell how many calls you're going to have in any type of neighborhood. But I think the last time we looked at a project, specifically this project when it came up last time, you know, high numbers would probably be anywhere between 30 and 35 calls a year increase. So it's not an increase that hits us very hard. We increased by 250, 300 calls a year right now, and we don't have any of that. And we'd be able to handle it fine. I mean, if you look at our, the stats that we share, our mutual aid is way down on how much people come into the collaborative and help us from outside agencies. The only real time we have that is in our, what we call AMAR areas. We have particular intersections and interstate that we cover that because of where they are and the propensity of bad crashes and be able to get there as quickly, we have automatic mutual aid responding. And then if we have an actual working house fire or a commercial fire, we always have mutual aid coming in as well. That's pretty much all you're seeing our mutual aid be across our statistical data. So from the fire department standpoint, it's not going to be a hampering our process or our ability to serve. Thank you.
And one more note for the record. The email from Martina does say attorney-client privileged communication, not for distribution. So therefore, when I get an email from Martina that includes attorney-client privileged and communication, not for distribution, I take into belief that everything in that email from the first sentence until the end, when she says, "Thank you, Martina," is information that is only privileged for us on council. But now, I know, per Amanda, we can talk about whatever we want in these emails because it's all subjective, and we don't have to believe that any of it is attorney-client privilege. Amanda has said that we can talk about whatever we want in these emails, even though it's regarded as attorney-client privilege.
Mr. Henning, you know, just because you say something doesn't make it true.
That's exactly what you said, but thank you.
No, it is not exactly what I said.
Amanda, I put on the record, no.
You are allowed to, no, listen to me. You are allowed to talk about a motion to reconsider. There is nothing that says you cannot discuss a motion to reconsider.
Where does it say that in this email?
You are allowed to talk about Robert's Rules of Order. If someone is going to make a motion to reconsider, you are allowed to discuss that.
This is what the email states. Mayor and council, the purpose of my email is to advise you, I've been contacted by attorney Jerry McDonnell, representing...
Mr. Henning, I'm going to advise you not to read it because it's attorney-client privileged.
So what is attorney-client privilege and what is it in this email, then? Amanda just said that it isn't attorney-pride and clever. She just said that it's not. So now we're going to be secretive to the residents. Am I hearing this correctly? Does anybody else hear it? Does somebody think that part of this email should be now kept a secret, even though Amanda said we could talk about it, but our legal counsel's saying it's a secret? I'm very confused right now.
Let's take the temperature down a little bit.
What are your thoughts?
We're talking about a preliminary, I'm not, I'm not going to get into that. Our city attorney has advised that we not do that, and...
But our city manager said we're allowed.
I want you to, to remind you, this is about a preliminary plan.
Our city manager said that we are allowed to talk about the emails, but then our city...
That is not what I said. I said you are allowed to talk about a motion to reconsider. If you want to talk about a motion to reconsider in the Robert's Rules of Order, you are permitted to do that. There is nothing in that email that says that you are not.
But Martina just said, "I'm not allowed to read the email into the record." So make it make sense.
You strongly advised it, but, I mean...
No, I am talking about the procedure. If you wanted to talk, if you wanted to go out on keep it rural and tell everyone there that there is the possibility of a motion to reconsider because Robert Rules of Order allows that, that would have been fine. Releasing that email would not be fine.
Any other discussion? Anything else new?
I believe Chief Hammond was going to prepare a statement.
I'll just say, as far as staffing, once I get up to full staffing, the additional houses isn't going to make that much of a difference. We're still waiting for one of our officers that are on a medical. Once we get that clearance, and he comes off the books, we'll hire that. We've had an increase in housing on Westbrook. We've had very minimal, minimal calls for service out there. As that expands, I expect the same thing as that expands if it goes through on, should we pretend to remain, will we get calls for service? Yes. Is it going to be a big impact? No, not really.
Thanks, chief. I want to go back to, I just want to make sure I'm clear on as far as the preliminary part of this. So there's other, there's other studies that need to be done before this would, you know, would come back?
Yes. What's before City Council tonight for reconsideration is the preliminary plan. If this should pass this evening, the developer would then have to go back to planning commission with the final development plan, which would then ultimately come back to City Council for final approval, or disapproval or amendment.
But this is still, this is still only the first reading?
Yes, and this is only the first reading. So it would be on the agenda at the February 20th meeting if, should it pass tonight.
Anything else?
I guess just for clarification, there wouldn't be any kind of this happening, able to happen again, a motion or any reconsideration?
Not for this one, no.
I'll just add, Mr. Mayor, you keep emphasizing this is preliminary, but I will say to council, when it becomes final, I think it makes it harder for this council to turn it down. Because they can come back and say, well, everything's good to go, and if we don't like it, then I think lawsuits would, the lawsuit would be bigger than what we'd be looking at now.
This still has to go back through planning. They have to come up with a final plan, has to go through the planning board, the planning board then has to make their recommendation approval before it even gets here. So even staffs get involved in drafting out the final plan. So this is all preliminary. I mean, layout of the whole thing could change between now and that final layout.
Anything else, anyone?
Well, since there were a lot of objections last time, I'd like to know why there were objections, so that I can get an idea as far as why there was no consideration being given the last time around.
Objections made from the residents who are here?
No, from the person who cast the vote. So I would like, you know, for instance, you said no. Why? Why did you say no after?
Because I listened to residents, and we have like 100 residents here.
Kenny, I'm still talking. Kenny? I'm still talking. I would like to know why, after you have a preliminary presentation being given back last, early, late last year, two open houses, planning commission meeting, and coming to the council meeting, there was virtually no opposition being given by anybody here on council. But then when the vote's taken, there's resounding no vote. What happened? Why was it, why was it now rejected after nothing being said prior to? Why did we waste four months of these guys' time to present something and then all of a sudden shoot it down?
We don't ever have conversations outside of council meetings. That's the start.
We had every, we had every opportunity to have some input as far as the open house sessions, the initial planning presentation they did, even, even the planning board. Everything had an opportunity for making some comments, and for, I would like to know on the record why the no votes were cast. What was, what was the problem?
I didn't go to any of those meetings because I was never in for it, because I listened to the residents, and the residents said from the beginning, they didn't want it.
Well, Kenny, okay, one of your responsibilities is actually to hear what the facts are and not just listen to everybody else.
How many, how many residents did we have here in favor of it? I recall zero speaking in favor of it.
Well, I remember a lot of the people that were here were from Inglewood, and that's definitely what was here.
Yeah, I recall zero residents speaking in favor.
Kenny, your city didn't appear to make a decision based on the facts. And I want to know why you voted no.
I just told you why. Because unlike you, I listen to residents.
Okay, so you say you listen to the...
So move on to Tim and Ryan and Ms. Kelly.
Okay, fine, Tim, that's fine. I asked you first.
And I just told you, I don't say it for the third time. I listen to residents unlike you. So move on to the next council meeting.
Fine. Ryan, I'd like to know why you voted no.
Oh, sure, Greg. Go back and read the minutes, you'll see all the questions I asked. And, yeah, I live north of 40, and I figured the developer knew they weren't going to get my vote. But I was actually quite thoughtful on this. You know, I'm a numbers guy, I'm analytical. If you go read all the questions I asked, the answers I got were not to my satisfaction in terms of weighing the risk to the city and the long-term implications. And I'll just leave my answer at that. Thanks.
And, you know, Tim?
Yeah, I had a lot of problems with the plat, the number of people, the road out in front. You're going to have to put a stop sign at Main Street, and you're going to have rock underneath the whole thing. And we already have a problem with the water that's not going to go away. It's still there, and apparently with retention basins as opposed to detention basins, there has been, and the history is there, we've sent people out to take care of the bug problem in the summertime with the water and standing water, as we all know, is not going to make that any better. It's only going to make it worse. And I just, like I said, at the last meeting, and I didn't get good answers on them, and Randy wasn't here, and he isn't here now, to answer the questions as far as the city goes. I mean, Amanda, you're, you're an expert too, but you're not as an expert in this stuff like Randy is. And, you know, that's the reason that there's a lot of questions that need to be answered. And last meeting, I didn't hear any answers to those questions in answers that I thought were suitable.
Now, Ms. Kelly's turn.
So at the last meeting, if you recall, I did ask for modifications. As written, I didn't hear, I mean, I was only told that we can do it per, as written. I did have modifications that I wanted to add to the ordinance, but at that time, we couldn't vote on it that way. So then, there was other things in that ordinance, like for example, since this is the preliminary plan, at the developer's expense, they have to do a traffic study, they have to do a water study, they have to do those particular studies. And then Inglewood, too, voted on this when the last mayor was in office. It's a different story now with the new mayor. So can they revisit? Inglewood can be revisited for the maybe emergency exit from the roads. They could go back and do that. But this is just all preliminary, and that's why.
I'm going to add that, yeah, we can, we can express modifications and all that, but I guess that's the flexibility of the PDD. Correct me if I'm wrong, city manager. However, that requires some work on our part, thinking about what modification do we want? What would we agree to? This isn't just something we come up with something out of thin air at our meeting. And some ways, I sort of wish we had our old code, because it was a bit more structured and laid out to where we'd have to maybe put as much pressure on ourselves. So I'm, I just throw that out with the PDD aspect. So I don't know, Ms. Kelly, do you have some modifications you want to make? But can we at this point with the reconsideration, because we already had a motion and a second?
Right, because now you're at the point where you have the motion and the second, so you can't, you know.
Because we're ahead of ourselves with the modifications at this point.
Well, we certainly could have made some before the vote. Could we not?
Well, that's...
Before the vote, but the issue was after the vote is when Ms. Kelly asked about modifications.
So the modifications issued, to me, is sort of moot. Because...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The modification issue is sort of moot. I mean, we can't make any now if we revoke, because they were already, we went back in time to that point where we're past that.
If some, if somebody wanted to make a motion to modify it, you could make that because that motion would take precedent because we have not yet voted on, again, Mr. Bachmann's motion to approve. So if somebody wanted to make a motion to amend, you could do that. As I said before, the reason when Ms. Kelly asked at the last meeting if amendments could be made, the vote was already taken. And so it couldn't be modified at that point. It had already gone down in flames. Let me put it that way.
Just one more thing that kind of speaks to what Ryan was saying, and also Tim, I think. You know, our council's role is not to be the developer. Okay? In other words, you know, for me or any of us to bring the modifications and say, hey, I want, you know, I want a bigger lot, or I want a, you know, I want four more exits or something like that, you know, I'm a resident. We have a planning commission who vets this, and we have professional city planners and professional managers that do this for a living. That's what's their job. Our job is to follow the charter, to follow our business plan, to follow the plan Clayton, and to make sure that we're following that. It's not to get into the weeds on the development. That's their job. You know, it's, they bought the property. You know, I mean, we're going to hope they do the right thing. I mean, you know, that's what they're, they're in business to do that. You know, Tim had talked about the rock, and I'm familiar with that. I'm a real estate agent, so I've dealt with that situation up there. I get it. But just like, I think it was the gentleman from the, I think it was the other gentleman, not these two, that was from the developer or from the builder last, Matt? I think, yeah, and he had said that, because he had, he had addressed what you had said, Tim, about being, you know, rock and all that, and he was well aware of that. And he said, you know, 25 years ago, it was an issue. You know, you had sticks, literally sticks of dynamite, you know, out blowing up rock trying to, and now they don't have to do that anymore. And they're not building basements like they did in Iron Gate where a lot of stuff floods. So...
I dealt with the rock right down the street here. Like, I know what rock is and what, how hard it is to deal with.
I get that.
We had a lot of it down here, the whole city of Clayton's on bedrock. There's no question about that.
I understand that. But how long ago was that, and what, what were you doing to mitigate that? Probably blasting, you know?
They had to blast a little bit.
Yeah.
But they had the big hooks to tear it up with, too.
Well, I'm just saying.
I mean, the... 25 years. They've had it as long as I've been here, and that's over 25 years.
I understand. But again, is it, it's not our role to say, you know, how they're going to build it.
No, but it is our role to take care of the citizens of the city of Clayton who put us in this seat. Wait a minute now, Kenny. That, I agree with everything you said about following the council and the staff and everything else, but it's our duty to take care of the wishes of the cities, of citizens of Clayton.
I had two. Who else is going to assess the risk and look at the impacts on the city? And that's the way I'm looking at it from a broad, big picture. I'm not proposing to get in the weeds how things are going on. But, you know, I said at the last meeting in my comments, what's next, then what? Okay, well, this goes in. What were the implications to the city? What are the risks? What are the impacts on our residents and our budget?
And again, I mean, I'm, I don't want to be argumentative, because we can go around, we're going round and round now. But you've already heard from our police chief and our fire chief and our city manager and the planning commission and every, you know, everyone else that has an input. And again, you say you don't want to get in the weeds, but they, they're paid to assess the risks. They, they've, I mean, I think you're cutting them short if you're saying they haven't assessed the risks.
I'm not talking about risk with them. I got full confidence in their ability to do their job. My concern is the broad implications five to 10 years out. You know, risk of failure, risk of pulling out, leaving things undone, dealing with the bedrock, that's going to cost a fortune, those kind of things. Yeah, that, those are the, those are the kind of factors I'm weighing.
Well, Ryan, if you recall, they have up to 10 years to build.
Right.
So during that process, things can happen. But this, again, is just a preliminary measure at this point.
Don't we have a motion on the table?
We do.
I think we should call a question then.
Can we have a voice roll call? Can we have a voice roll call?
Voting on the ordinance. Motion to approve.
To approve, yes.
Okay. So Farmer?
No.
Henning?
No.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Bachman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Yes. So what is our, what is our next step as a council?
So at the next city council meeting on February 20th, this will come before council for a second reading.
And what is the next step for the staff?
We wait to see if... We wait for council to have the second reading.
The next item on our agenda is the city manager's report. Amanda?
Good evening, mayor and council. Just a few items for you this evening. I want to let everyone know that the Northmont Dance Party will take place Friday, February 21st, 2025 at Meadowbrook at Clayton. The doors open at 6:30. There is a cash bar and the event runs from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. It is a country and western theme this time. I think Earl is calling it boots and hats or, yeah, so there's that. You have in your packet, we were approached by, I'll just read it. So Union is proposing to run an eight-inch water main west on Phillipsburg Union to the Philip, to the Village of Phillipsburg. This is not a city of Clayton project. This is between Union and Phillipsburg. Chief Garber, Randy Sanders and I met with Steve Wolf, who is the Phillipsburg Administrator and the project engineering firm from Westler on Friday, January 24th. We informed them that they would need to include hydrants every 750 feet within the city of Clayton. They were agreeable to that. And letters to Clayton residents concerning this project were mailed out on Friday, January 31st. The meeting will be held Thursday, February 13th, 2025 at 7:00 PM at the Salem Church of the Brethren at 6037 Phillipsburg Union Road. It is a public meeting. It's not a public hearing, but it is a public meeting for anyone who would be interested in learning about the project.
I got a question on that. So are they, they're actually, were they supplying water to the city?
Union is going to supply water to Phillipsburg, yes. Oh, that's the plan at least. We were, so good news, Hoak Road Widening Phase 2A, MVRPC has finished reviewing the applications for funding. The Hoak Road Widening Phase 2A scored well and is being recommended for the congestion mitigation and air quality CMAC funding. It's the same funding we got for, we received for Phase 1. So when we hear final about it, I will let council know. The Hoak Road and Westbrook Roundabout, the city attended the scoping meeting for the Hoak Road Roundabout Project. If you recall, when the city of Clayton and the city of Troutwood applied for the funding, it was at 100% funding through ODOT at the scoring meeting, at the scoping meeting, I'm sorry. We were informed that there will now be a 90-10 split between ODOT and the two jurisdictions. The city of Troutwood and the city of Clayton will split the 10% of the construction cost of $283,938 and the cost of engineering is more than 100% by the municipalities at $198,757. And even though it is now a 90-10 split, I still think that this is a very good opportunity for the city of Clayton since this is one of those intersections that has come up multiple times just in my five years being here of needing to be addressed.
So Amanda, that, by my numbers, it looks like it's going to cost the city $241,000 and some odd change. Okay.
Which is, you know, I know it's a lot of money, but a drop in the bucket when you're talking about modifying an intersection. The mural at Hardscrabble, so if you'll recall, we had been working with the Northmont Art Department on doing murals around the city. They did one at Meadowbrook at Clayton for us. They have reached out and they are interested in doing one at Hardscrabble Park on the bathrooms. They have been given the guidance to produce murals that involve the history of Clayton, the history of the park, et cetera. Student designs will be submitted to the city in May and I'll bring them to council for your review and you can make a selection.
We should let them paint.
I know. In your packet, there's also the related party questionnaire. The January 16th meeting council received at your seats, the related party questionnaire for our annual audit. Please complete the form or return it to the address on the form. If you don't want to mail it in, you can always return it to me and I will make sure that it gets to the auditors. We now have the tax help schedule. So the tax assistance has been finalized for the city of Clayton. Residents will need to schedule appointments by calling Eric Hein at 216-857-3174 or Michelle Jordan at 216-857-7382. The tax help is held here in council chambers from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM and the dates are Thursday, March 6th, 2025, Tuesday, March 25th, 2025, and Thursday, April 10th, 2025. Residents can also submit their taxpayer assistance form and necessary documents in the drop box outside our offices here, Mark CCA, at the exterior of the city building. They will come pick them up and complete the forms and return them. The Taste of Northmont, we have been informed, has been canceled for this year. They are going to pivot to doing a summer restaurant tour. So when I get in more information about that, I will push that out to council. The MVRPC annual dinner is April 24th, 2025 at the Marriott at the University of Dayton. The invitation is attached. If you're interested in doing that, just let me know. I'm happy to RSVP and we can pull together a PO for the party. Just let me know. And then just as an FYI, we have the patrol officer wage reopener for the fact finding. We were supposed to do it on January 22nd, but our fact finder fell ill. So it has been moved to Monday, February 10th, 2025. So hopefully I'll have something for you at the February 20th meeting concerning that. And, oh, and just a reminder, there is an open seat on the Board of Zoning Appeals that we have advertised that through next Friday through the 14th of February. We have received three resumes, I think, so far for that, but as always, council is able to bring whomever they would like. And the term would expire on 1/14/2029. And that is all I have for you this evening.
Anything for the city manager?
Yes, I would like to ask if we can please have Randy at the next meeting?
I'm sure he'd be happy to be here.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, so we'll move on to visitors' comments. Looks like we have two visitors in the house. Anyone want to make a comment? Nope. Nope. Okay. So we'll move on to council and mayor's comments. Mr. Farmer, start.
Good evening, everybody. Not real happy about that vote tonight. I expect the next meeting, we'll have a packed house for sure. Just want to point everybody, February is Skin General Heart Defect Month. Day late birthday to my son David. He turned 28. He was born with hypoplastic left heart syndrome. So I, so anyone out there dealing with a kid with a heart defect, I can empathize because I lived it. And feel free to reach out to me anytime. But just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention and we'll see you next meeting.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Henning?
Just very disappointed in how we acted this evening on how we operated in regards to the reconsideration. I believe that we should not hide behind bureaucracy and I believe that residents should not be kept in the dark of matters that are going on within the city, which tonight we demonstrated we, not myself, but others here on council like to keep taxpayers in the dark. True transparency means we share critical information. That also did not happen. We did not share this critical information with the residents. We were told by Martina something and I'm disappointed that the city manager did not proactively say we could talk about the reconsideration after getting Martina's email. The buck stops with the city manager for us and she never told us we could share anything. We received an email from Martina saying that it was attorney-client privilege and we respectfully followed our law director's guidance on the email, only to be told tonight by the city manager, well, we could have talked about the reconsideration in another forum. So very disappointing. I hope the residents are paying attention and I hope, and encourage them to be at the next meeting and I hope and ask that they speak out against this and ask for a council that is truly more transparent than what we demonstrated tonight.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gorman?
I'd just like to wish all the ladies in the city a happy Valentine's Day and we'll see you on the 20th. The one thing we should mention also is that the Carrados groundbreaking is the 20th at what, noon, I think, noon?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Merkel?
Nothing to add.
Ms. Kelly?
Since my father's not here due to illness, he wanted me to be his voice tonight to remind everyone about the dance party Friday, February 21st at Meadowbrook. Willie is ready to go, so I know this has been on social media and if we can share it, whoever has social media, if we can share it to others. And it's looking like a great time with Western dancing, line dancing. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Bachman?
Evening, everyone. Won't add much for tonight, just a welcome to Officers Marlette and Poe and firefighter Gracie. You know, we've got two great chiefs here, so you guys have brought in, you know, considerable number of, of great firefighters, police officers and everyone involved. So, you know, it sounds like with their resumes, they're going to be great for the city. So thank you for the continuation of that and best of luck to them. That's all I have.
I'd like to echo that and say welcome to our new officers and also to Sam. I've always said, you know, for the size of our city, we have really high-performing first responders. The fire and the police are outstanding. They've done a great job and these guys look like they're going to add to that also. So I'm real proud to have them on board. So other than that, I don't have anything else. I want to thank everybody for...
Mayor? Executive session? I need, yeah, brief.
I'll move for adjournment.
Uh, not yet. You're too late.
A short executive session.
Yeah, so that's all I have, but we do have the need for an executive session, so...
And the reason for an executive session would be pursuant to a higher vice code 121.22G1 matters pertaining to employment of public employees.
Okay. What Martina said. So can we have a roll call, please?
I need a motion first, please.
Motion to adjourn for executive session.
Motion to go into executive session by Mr. Farmer, second by Mr. Henning. Roll call, sorry.
Farmer?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Bachman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Yes.